Good morning, everyone. Good morning. I call the meeting of May 10, 2022 to order. And I know that we had a little extended conversation in the Finance Committee, so we're starting our meeting at 10:35. Would Member Jim Zay, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then, everyone, please remain standing for the invocation.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I invite Pastor John Kim from the Restoration Community Church to lead us in invocation. Pastor Kim.
Good morning. My name is John Kim. I'm honored to be here. I serve as the Executive Pastor at Restoration Community Church of Naperville. Thank you for inviting me here and especially during this Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Let us pray. Our gracious God, Almighty Creator and Heavenly Father, we give you thanks today for life, for the breath in our lungs, and for your many, many blessings in our lives, especially as ones who live in this blessed and privileged nation, we pause to count our blessings and to give you thanks. I thank you for the important work of this board that has assembled this morning and for every one of these board members who have been entrusted with the task of governing and making decisions on behalf of the people of DuPage County. Thank you for their holy calling as public civil servants tasked with maintaining peace and providing justice for the flourishing of every person in this county, each of whom have been created in your image. We pray for your favor upon their work today. Thank you for the willingness to serve for such a time as this. I ask that you would grant each of them wisdom and humility as they navigate the complexities and ramifications of the issues that will be discussed and decided today. Pray that they would be especially mindful of the most vulnerable and marginalized in our communities, those who lack the means or the access to speak for themselves. I also ask for your protection over each of them and their loved ones as they carry out their important work today and beyond. I commit these leaders in this meeting to you, and we pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Here.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Here.
Hart. Fajuski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Shorzy. Selman. Tornatori. Nzay.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a quorum. On the Order of Chairman's Report, we have a couple of presentations. First and foremost, I'd like to invite Bill Liu to the podium, please. Welcome, sir. It's good to see you. We begin today with a proclamation declaring May as the Asian American Pacific Islander Month in DuPage County. Bill Liu, as many of you know, is the Board President of the Zi Lin Association of Naperville. He joins us to accept our proclamation in honor of this month. Zi Lin serves the Asian American community, providing adult daycare and home health services. It's an innovative educational system for children across cultural community events and services. Bill, we thank you for the outstanding service you provide here in DuPage County, in Naperville, and throughout our region. And I'm going to ask you to share a few thoughts with us. I'm going to read the proclamation first, and it goes as follows. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed during the month of May to recognize and celebrate the history, culture, achievements, and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the United States; and whereas the month of May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese residents to the United States in May 1843 and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in May 1869, a majority of which had tracks laid by Chinese immigrants; and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders are one of the fastest-growing ethnic populations in the nation and represent 12.7% of the population in DuPage County; and whereas DuPage County celebrates and pays tribute to the contributions that generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made and continue to make to our history, society, culture, and communities more vibrant and prosperous; and whereas diversity represents one of our greatest strengths, and by supporting and recognizing the contributions and accomplishments of Asian American and Pacific Islander men and women, DuPage County celebrates the importance of inclusion as we build a brighter future for our residents; whereas DuPage County is proud to celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and to commemorate the essential contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments that Asian American and Pacific Islanders have made. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and celebrate the culture, traditions, and history of Asian Americans Pacific Islanders. I entertain a motion. So move. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it enacted this 10th day of May 2022. Bill, thanks for all the good work that you do for our community.
Thank you so much. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Especially, I want to special thank Chairman Cronin and to the dear Board members. This is actually my second time here to accept their proclamation. And on behalf of the Zi Lin Association, I want to thank you, the DuPage County, for welcoming us wholeheartedly. Then, like Chairman Cronin mentioned, Zi Lin Association, we are the largest Asian social service center outside of the city of Chicago in the state of Illinois. When we founded our association, we were only serving Chinese population. But then, right now, as we grow and we have started to serving all kinds of minority in addition to Chinese, Korean, Hispanic, and African American, we have made sure that we are very, we are all inclusive. And come to my second point is that about 10 years ago, when the late Mayor Prado of Naperville appointed me to be the Chinese Chairman of the City of Naperville, he specifically told me that Naperville, in year 2020, the Asian non-white will be minority. So this is an era for the inclusion. And then, I have to, I'm very proud to hear, to say that, you know, we are all inclusive. And also, on behalf, the Asian population community here in the DuPage County, myself is a 20-years resident, I want to thank the Board, Chairman, and the Board to make we Asians feel welcomed here in DuPage County. And before I conclude, I just want everybody to understand that Asians are the same as everybody else. We all want to have a good job, good future for our children. We want to have safety, and we want to have a great, bright future. Everyone is the same. Thank you so much for including Asians in the DuPage County. Thank you.
Okay. We have a proclamation in honor of pro bono and legal aid services. I'd like to invite Member Renahan, Linda Rio, Michael Bergman, Cece Najera, Robert Rupp, and Marissa Weisman to the podium to join me up here, please. This morning, we're going to take a couple of moments to thank the organizations in DuPage County that promote or provide free legal aid and services to our residents who need legal help but cannot afford a lawyer. The Honorable Brian Chapman couldn't be here, but we particularly want to mention the good work he does as Chair of the 18th Judicial Circuit Pro Bono Committee. Pro bono for the good, right? Pete, you got that right. You're a scholar, a Latin scholar. It is a group that strives to enhance equal access to justice by encouraging and promoting pro bono work in the 18th Judicial Circuit, launched in 2017. The committee works collaboratively with the DuPage County Bar Association. I'm joined by the Judicial and Public Safety Committee Chair Julie Renahan. Thanks to our guests who represent organizations providing vital connections and legal services, including Marissa Weisman with Prairie State Legal Services. We've got Cece Najera from DuPage Legal Aid, Michael Bergman, Public Interest Law Initiative, Linda Rio with Pro Bono Network, and Robert Rupp with the DuPage Bar Association Recruits. That'd be great. So whereas it is estimated that in half of all low-income households in Illinois, a member of that household will need legal assistance, and 83% of those residents are unable to afford a lawyer. And whereas legal services impact basic human needs, including physical safety, access to healthcare, government benefits, adequate housing; whereas in 2020, 31,325 Illinois lawyers provided 1.7 million pro bono legal service hours; and whereas in 2017, the Public Interest Law Initiative initiated a partnership with the DuPage Bar Association to expand access to justice for low-income clients, creating the 18th Judicial Circuit Pro Bono Committee comprised of local legal aid groups, including Prairie State Legal, DuPage Legal Aid, DuPage Bar Association, the Public Interest Law Initiative, and the Pro Bono Network. And whereas this legal aid community provided thousands of hours of critical services to our neediest residents, and were highly valued partners in our court system, particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas through court appearances and mediation, Prairie State Legal has represented individuals and families facing eviction and has prevented homelessness, contributing to DuPage County leading the state and Illinois Housing Development Authority COVID-related assistance. And whereas DuPage Legal Aid organizations, volunteer attorneys and staff completed more than 440 family law cases in DuPage County last year alone, including but not limited to orders of protection, parentage, bankruptcy, divorce, guardianship. Whereas Pro Bono Network with the Prairie State Legal aids DuPage County's seniors and neediest residents through preparation of advanced directives and critical end-of-life documents and is a leading American Bar Association legal advice online provider. And whereas DuPage County seeks to educate the public about the extensive work local lawyers are doing and encourages more support through volunteering and donations to promote pro bono work in the legal aid community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board, members of the Board, do commend the legal community and these legal services providers and pro bono programs for their work providing services to DuPage County residents in need. I'll entertain a motion. So move. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you so much for the vital work that you do. It's really, really remarkable and so necessary and important. And I think you, on behalf of the entire county, we want to express our gratitude. Robert, come on.
There we go.
We've got lawyers up here. Come on.
Always know I'm a sucker for a microphone. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much to this body, to the county, for recognizing the hard work that all of the groups represented here today do. On behalf of the Bar Association, I especially thank those in this chamber who are members of our Bar Association and to those who have supported us over the years. Thank you very much for this day, for this proclamation, and we look forward to serving you for many, many years to come. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Chairman Cronin and the Board for entertaining this proclamation today. It means a lot to me. So I was a peely intern, it was my first job, first legal job, and I worked with Pro Bono Network for years. And there's really nothing better than somebody saying, nobody's ever helped me before. And that's the kind of payment we get as pro bono attorneys, so thank you.
Okay, we have one more proclamation, and that is to honor the ODM Expo Center, the 40th anniversary proclamation. I'm going to invite all District 2 Board members to join me up here, as well as Villa Park President Nick Kazone, if he's here. I saw him earlier. Sis Greco, Renee Greco, Brad Walsh, the Greco family members, Beth Marquetti. All the Grecos are here. Hi. Best cheeseburger in the whole world. In Villa Park at Moore Brewing Company. So I got to tell you, I've known the Grecos a long time, and they're a wonderful family, very involved with the Immaculate Conception High School and my parish, and I sent my kids. So I just want to thank you on a personal note. But I also want to recognize that the ODM Expo Center, which is the Greco family business, among other things they do, but it's celebrating its 40th anniversary in their farewell season. So this is part of their farewell tour. Would that be fair to say? So since its beginning in 1981, owned and operated by the Greco family, the ODM Expo Center has been a Chicagoland venue for concerts, indoor sports, trade shows, served the community really very admirably during the COVID and the pandemic with the testing site during the height of the pandemic. It's truly the end of an era, as the ODM will change hands and become a trucking and warehouse business beginning next month. I want to congratulate the Greco family on four decades of service. I know owner Phil Greco is joining us via Zoom, and I'm going to read our proclamation here. And then I can offer, I ask the Grecos and representatives from District 2 if they'd like to offer a few words. So here's the resolution. Whereas the ODM Expo Center opened its doors as an indoor soccer facility in 1981; whereas ODM Expo Center has been owned and operated by the Greco family of Elmhurst since its development; and whereas the Grecos have committed their lives to bringing visitors and residents together in DuPage County by hosting some of the world's biggest performers, including Kenny Rogers, Kiss, The Beach Boys, the Glenn Miller Orchestra, and many more. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the ODM opened its doors to the DuPage County Health Department and allowed the operation of a drive-through COVID-19 testing site at their facility, showing a dedication to the health and safety of our county. Whereas in the past four decades, the ODM has been a popular attraction for residents and tourists, bringing in more than 1.2 million guests annually. And whereas in 2022, the ODM is celebrating its 40th anniversary and its farewell season, as the facility will close on June 1 for the development of a warehouse facility. And whereas the ODM Expo Center has been a treasured venue to bring members of the community together for concerts, sports, haunted houses, trade shows, and so much more for 40 years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the County Board, do congratulate the ODM Expo Center Greco family for 40 years of service to DuPage County and express our sincere appreciation for being a valued member of the community. I'll entertain a motion. So moves. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. It's adopted. I want to thank you, Sis Greco and the fabulous Greco family for all the good things you do for the community. And I want you to accept this on behalf of all of us, please.
I am a little shorter. That's a wow. Now, that's a wow. I mean, it's not every day that something this exciting happens to our family. Chairman Cronin and Board members, Beth, who had a lot to do with initiating this, Marion Emes here, President Kazone from our village of Villa Park, all you Board members. It's hello to all, and it's just a privilege, a privilege for me to be here, representing our family. With me, behind me, I have Brad Walsh, who's our Facility Director, Renee Greco, my sister, and Bruce Campbell, my husband. And I'd like to say hi to Phil, who I know is at home with his wife Kathy, my other brother, along with some of our ODM family. So Philip, he's kind of our, he's our president and also our fearless leader. And we're happy he's here with us. So I thought about, what am I supposed to say? Because I really have never thought I'd be in this position. So I thought, well, what's the most common question that people have asked us over the last 40 years? And it's, where did the name "ODM" come from? Well, the word "ODM" is a Greek word about a small theater from ancient Greece in ancient Rome. And it was used for competition in music and poetry, and it's a theater that's enclosed in a concert hall. So our mom Phyllis just went through the dictionary, literally, and found it. And it didn't make sense to anyone, so we thought it was okay. And as Chairman Cronin had said, our building was first built in the early '70s. It was the first building of an overall development that my dad had started. He wanted a place for kids to get off the streets and have somewhere to play. So that's where the Hatrick Ice Arena came because of the three rings under one roof. And that's where the Chicago Warriors played with the United States Hockey League. But during that time, the interest rates were 17% to 19%, which led our parents to battle foreclosure, condemnation, loss of property due to eminent domain. And with a lot of perseverance, they literally bought back their own building and reopened it as the ODM in November 13 of 81. They were a great team. They were just a great team. Since then, we have been DuPage County's largest sports and expo center of located on 14 and 1/2 acres under 130,000 square foot roof. Our dad, Emo, came to Italy as a young boy traveling through Ellis Island, and he settled in Chicago. We, as children, young adults, and even now, have always worked in a family business, even before the ODM. Our parents created church furnishing, ecclesiastical furnishings, which is now Pep Industries, that we are still working with the churches around the country, in which my husband is instrumental there. The first thing also, when I talk about the ODM, is what comes to mind is, it's just a great place to work. Everyone there actually cares about each other, you know? And they enjoy working for our promoters. This feeling is what defines a true family business. The size does not matter. Everybody in our daily activities of life come to the ODM to have fun. No one has to come. Nobody's forced to come. And what our job is, as facility operators of that building, is to promote, is to assist our promoters to accomplish their dreams along with providing a safe environment for our guests. And we've been so fortunate. We've had all the major adult soccer leagues in the city of Chicago. As Chairman Cronin mentioned, the Arts and Crafts Festival, our first client, Lyons Township, 38 and 1/2 years ago, is still with us. They had their last day last week. And some of the events you've heard of, and some you might not have heard of, Dick Clark and The Beach Boys with Frankie Valli, Barry Manilow, Oprah Winfrey. There's groups like Robert Plant and Smashing Pumpkins that needed a place to practice with no one knowing they were there. That was a trick, but we did it. Amy Grant, Villa Park's plain white tees. We had number one haunted attraction for years at the ODM. Christmas with Kenny Rogers, New Year's Eve with Alabama. One of the, you mentioned Kiss, but one of the largest event days we've ever had was the Blaze Fest with Kiss. How did Kiss perform at the ODM? I don't even, I was like, Kiss is here. So I didn't see much of it. I was pouring beer. But sports icons, we had Stan Makita, Ron Santo, Ernie Banks. Chuck Norris came in for a kickboxing deal and fell in love with my mother and took tons of pictures with her. But boxing, wrestling, rodeos, ethnic events, corporate events, United, Lexus, Porsche, the list just goes on and on. And sometimes, all these events were back-to-back-to-back in which we were flipping the building from one setting to another. And it was just like a three-ring circus. And then, we actually had a three-ring circus with the Shriners and George Garden. So we still can't figure out, to this day, what was crazier, cage wrestling, Limp Bizkit, Rammstein, or in Stained Clown Posse with pallets of Faygo Pop all over the ODM floor. So our goal over these years of events was, was, and still is, set the date and leave the rest to us. And we feel we met that goal. Currently, yesterday, today, and tomorrow, the ODM is at auction. During the early days, this is how we purchased much of our equipment. We always rationalized, how many times do we need to rent this to pay it off? Or how many hot dogs and beers do we need to sell to pay it off? So at this point, the question is, how do you say goodbye to something that a family has created and touched so many lives over the last 50 years? Well, you can't. The building is a building, but the ODM is a million memories of shows, promoters, guests, and just wonderful staff. Phil was with DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau day one when they started, and they continue to support us. Beth, thank you. The Village of Villa Park, we put them through a lot. The Village of Villa Park has been through so many unique adventures with us, and they have assisted us with unbelievable support from our first early days to our final days of selling the ODM. Thank you very much. The Grecos and ODM family, thank you so much for recognizing our unique accomplishment. I'm open for any questions. Thank you, guys, very, very much.
I would, I want a tough act to follow, but I just want to tell you, this family, not only were they instrumental here in DuPage County and Villa Park, but Chairman Cronin referred to some of the things they've done at IC. We would not have a church at Mary Queen of Heaven if it wasn't for the Greco family. The school I went to, the same nuns that taught both Sis and me, that school was donated by the Greco family. The fields, the baseball fields they played on, Mary Queen of Heaven Baseball, donated by the Greco family. They are just so generous with their time and talent, and they're always there for every situation that would have come up. We needed a testing center. When the vaccine center came to DuPage and we had to move a testing center, the Greco stepped up, and we had our testing center on the east side of the stepped up, and we had our testing center on the east side of the county. I just can't say enough for this family and what they've done for our county. And Phil, who's struggling with ALS, who's watching right now, Phil, thank you for your service and your kindness and for your passion. You know, it's so important that you're here with us today. So God bless the Greco family, and God bless DuPage County. Thank you.
in our presentations and apologize for any of the delay. I have a few remarks I'd like to share with you this morning, please. So I'm going to address, if I may, the subject matter discussed in our 8:00 a.m. finance committee meeting, and I want to thank staff for putting together that comprehensive timeline and memo outlining relevant statutes and county ordinances. The way I look at it, the facts are pretty simple and the facts are pretty clear. On October 22nd, 2019, this board passed an ordinance which established the county cannabis retailers occupation tax at 3% from cannabis sales made in a municipality located in the county. It further directed that, quote, "copies of this ordinance shall be certified by the clerk and sent to the Illinois Department of Revenue prior to October 30th, 2019," unquote. In DuPage County, we don't pass ordinances generating new taxes very often. In fact, I would say it's a remarkably rare and special occurrence. This was incredibly remarkable, given the nature of the issue and how it all came together. The clerk was specifically directed by the ordinance to ensure the action of the board was recorded with the Illinois Department of Revenue so that the new tax could be collected. There's no record, no recollection, no receipt, not even a simple email indicating the clerk completed her duty as a duly-elected county official. The deputy clerk maintains the office did send the ordinance to the state. He does not know who sent it, to whom, when, was there an accompanying memo cover letter, who dropped the letter off, what post office did it go to, none of the above. It's just sounds like some sort of phantom occurrence. He says that is standard procedure in the clerk's office. Standard procedure, when you've got a document, precious cargo, that means millions of dollars to the county of DuPage, standard procedures sometimes aren't enough. It is not, nor has it ever been, the practice of this county board to tell another duly-elected county official how to do their job. I don't check up on the state's attorney on to whether or not he's indicting criminals or people that are accused of crimes. I don't check up on Treasurer Gwen Henry to make sure she sends out the property tax bills. Mr. Johnson's supposition that the clerk's statutory duty suddenly somehow or other became the county board's duty is preposterous. Believe what you will, the paperwork the clerk was supposed to file was never recorded with the Department of Revenue. And according to the memo Mr. White wrote for Member Chaplin, anyone and everyone except for the clerk is to blame, including but not limited to the mailroom at the Illinois Department of Revenue. Fact is that the day our finance department staff learned of this situation, they acted to immediately improperly file the ordinance with the specific individual in the correct division of the State Department of Revenue. They saved their emails, their tracking numbers, they called to confirm receipt. In other words, they acted professionally. They did what you're supposed to do. We believe the estimated amount of revenue lost is around $3 to $4 million. Our state's attorney believes that we cannot recoup those dollars as they were simply never collected. So the question is, what do we do now? What do we do? Well, it's no doubt that this was a very serious and egregious error. And I guess I would start by suggesting that the clerk, starting today, should establish a log that records its filings with any and all government agencies, particularly the Department of Revenue, so that they can provide an open and transparent record of all transactions that the clerk was supposed to handle from the day she took office through the balance of her term. And, you know, if the clerk failed to perform the duty of her office with respect to this significant multimillion-dollar item, what else are we missing? Let's face it, we wouldn't be here today immersed in this discussion about all of this if it had been, if this process had worked the way it's supposed to work. The ordinance, the law, the certification, the sending, it's very clear. We talked at length in our finance committee about the sending legal obligation, the sending part. This phantom person that supposedly mailed it, and there's no accompanying documents, there's no proof that that ever occurred. But I guess I would like to offer this thought, and I would humbly suggest that this may be the smoking gun. How does the clerk certify? When the clerk certifies an ordinance, how does that happen? She's legally obligated to certify and send to IDOR. We know that the ordinance was adopted on October 22nd, 2019, and pursuant to that ordinance, she was to certify and send to IDOR by October 30th. However, when asked to produce by our state's attorney that certification, the only certified copy she can produce, and it's in your packet for all of you to see, is dated September 2021, nearly two years after the ordinance was adopted. Where is the certified copy from October 2019? Where is it? So when the auditor is here, at the finance chairman's request, to provide some hope, an explanation, an obfuscation for the beloved clerk, he says there's no documents. Well, he's exactly right. There are no documents because she can't produce it. You can't produce a document of something that wasn't done. So there's a real problem here. There's a real problem. There's no certified copy of the ordinance that was adopted on October 22nd, 2019, and the only thing the clerk is going to produce is something here, a copy dated September 2021. So I suspect we haven't heard the last of what the consequences of this are. Certainly, the most easy-to-understand consequences are the lost revenue. Any one of us could speculate about what that $3 to $4 million could have gone to, to help a needy person or a virtuous cause in this county, but we don't have it because somebody didn't do their job. And it's not easy for me, but that's our responsibility to call out the truth and to put partisan, petty politics and silliness aside and do our responsibilities. And so those are my remarks today. We move on to the next order of business entitled, "Public Comment." Public comment. I am advised, we have a number of folks seeking to offer some thoughts here. And then we do have one online commenter. Do you have those names? First and foremost, we have Holly Hoopman here to talk about closed caption. Holly Hoopman.
Good morning. It's not often a citizen comes and thanks their board and their government for doing the right thing. In 2018, I came to your meeting and we spoke. I had some women in my organization who were hearing impaired. They were unable to follow along with the meeting, and they were unable to hear what the speakers were saying, especially, meaning in public comment. That was in the summer of 2018. I've come back multiple times, as you well know. I open my speech every time, asking you to fix this problem and to make it available for people who are hearing impaired. I've been told several times that was, we couldn't do this, we don't have the technology, it's not the way that our system works. But we all know that these are accommodations that the federal government has said that government bodies should definitely be adhering to and have access to all members of the public, not just those who can hear the voices at public comment or their officials. I would like to say a big thank you to Vice Chair Ashley Selman and Member Sadia Covert. Both of them worked diligently hard to bring this to DuPage County. So when you sit in the gallery today, not only do you see closed captioning, but you also see it being corrected so that it's accurate for the public to be able to view it in the gallery and online. The first transition was moving it to YouTube. That makes it more accessible to everybody in the public, not just those that are hearing impaired, because it'll easily work on your phone. So more people in the public can see their government. The closed captioning in YouTube is not all that great, as you may know. Sometimes it's kind of funny to watch you board members and see how they translate your words. I am very proud of these two members who worked on this, and I want to thank anyone else in this room who worked alongside them to make this happen. Also, I'd like to thank the staff that I'm sure has also worked on this and will continue to work on this to make it better for everyone in our public. It's really important that we're making sure that we have access to everybody in our community, and I'm just really proud to see government work for everyone. And it doesn't always happen, and I'm following up just to say thank you so much. And it's something that we should be proud of in the future as well. So Ashley and Sadia, thank you so much, especially Member Vice Chair Selman, who reached out to me to find, make the connection with the woman who sat in the gallery, to have the conversation, to make sure we were accommodating for her. And I really do appreciate that, because to me, that was very personal, and I think that she took it that way as well. So we also made amends with the resident who was left out of that meeting. So everyone, have a wonderful day, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Fendrick from DuPage County Medical Services Unit about health services in the county jail.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Michelle Fendrick. I am employed as a nurse in the jail by the sheriff. I earn less than $29 an hour. Our wages have been frozen for almost five years. With that, we are unable to attract and retain quality professionals. As a result, nurses are working 80 to 90 hours a week, and the mental health staff are down to two professionals, working, covering weekdays, nights, and weekends. I'm sure every one of you knows a nurse. Ask them, would they work for $29 an hour? I bet the answer would be no. When I say I work at the jail, people ask, what do you do? My response is everything. When an inmate arrives at the jail, nurses and mental health staff see almost every one of them at intake to assess what their needs will be while in custody. When an inmate is engaging in self-harming behaviors, attempts suicide by jumping from the second tier in the housing unit, or hangs themselves, has cancer and needs colostomy care, has an anaphylactic reaction, is pregnant and contracting, in going through withdrawal and vomiting and defecating on themselves, the nurses and mental health staff are the ones to respond. A more recent responsibility is medicated assisted treatment where the nurses are administering methadone and suboxone to inmates struggling with addiction. COVID has added so much more to our daily tasks. Over the past two years, the jail has had a number of COVID-positive cases. At one point, up to 50 inmates tested positive, one after another, and we provided medical care for them. Every day for two years, the medical and mental, medical and mental health staff have come to work, taking care of COVID patients, and exposing ourselves and our loved ones to COVID. We did not have the option of work from home. And honestly, many of us have tested positive. I don't understand the administrations and the county boards' indifference towards us, our medical union. Our staff deserve better working conditions and equitable treatment. We want DuPage County to be a competitor in attracting medical and mental health professionals. Myself especially, I want to retire in dignity and know that I try to make a difference. I can only hope you take the time to reconsider and support us as we try to continue to provide the best medical and mental health care we can. Thank you. I have copies of what I've just read, and you can, it'll be available.
Sure. Yeah, we can, with the, yeah, Member Grant Eckoff will receive them. Thank you. Thank you. Karen Rugg on flooding.
I'm impressed today with all the speakers so far. The Greco family, having a family that produced something, worked so hard. I gave everybody a picture of my mother and my father. I don't want to be on camera. They bought a piece of property in I task Illinois, in Addison Township, not in I task of the town, Addison Township, built their own house, flat land. It's not flat anymore. I begged you for help. Please help me. Please help me. Uphold the state statutes, obey the laws when you build a building. I don't care if they want a mansion. But you do not push your water and destroy my property and devalue my property and make my veteran husband suffer, obviously, greatest generation. What happened to this generation? What happened? Mrs. Greco talked about how much everybody cared. What do you care about? You want the lady that's a nurse? I want to talk now about the nurses of I task Illinois. They're flooding now. You talk about dignity. Everybody deserves dignity. The nurses in I task do not make $29 an hour. I guarantee it. There's no sidewalks. There's mud. There's swamps. They have to walk through the mud and park their cars in the slough stench, rotten vegetation bubbling up over the curb. You've heard me say this so many times. You've stolen six years of my life. Six years, and you don't care. You care so much about veterans. My husband was a four-year Vietnam veteran. What have you done to him? I don't do computers. I don't do texting. I don't do anything. I'm illiterate. I say, Wally, will you please print up these pictures? Wally, will you please get that off that microchip? Wally, and he doesn't want to do that. He's 75 years old. And you lie. Here, Berlin. I didn't know who he was until I saw him when you guys were being sworn in. I ran around, said, do you believe in the law? I tried to get into his office about three times. Berlin's office would not see me. I sat there, filled out all the logs, all the information, had videotapes with me. They would not see me. People would get up, go through that white door, get up, go through that white door. No, we're not going to see you. I wouldn't have to come here if he opened his eyes. Oh, now you're admitting DuPage County isn't perfect. DuPage County makes mistakes. What happened to $3, $4 million? There was an error. But Mr. Berlin here says, as I explained to you, when, this is Mr. Berlin's letter from Mr., what's his name? Hey Hayman. Hey Hayman. As I explained to you, when requested to investigate or evaluate complaints of stormwater violations, this office relies upon the expertise of the professionals employed at the DuPage County Department of Stormwater Management. Experts make mistakes, just like he just said half an hour ago. There's been a failure. Mistakes were made. Now, I've been a product of your mistakes for six years. I was in my late 60s when I came here. Now I'm going to be 73 next month. You sit there and smile and bobble your head all the time, Miss Lawyer. Pro bono, why don't you give me a lawyer? I'm retired. I can't afford the last one I saw in Naperville Road on Deal. You're smiling. Oh, I love your smile so much. He wanted $50,000.
Ms. Rugg, would you please bring your remarks to a close?
No, this is too complicated. $60,000. $500 an hour. We're retired. We're in a pension. Where am I going to get all this extra cash?
Chairman, Mrs. Rugg has now had five minutes.
Yeah, we've given you a lot of latitude. So thank you for sharing your thoughts with us today. Thank you very much.
Are you going to redo it?
Really appreciate you coming out here today.
Yeah, I know. Are you going to redo it? Are you going to redo the evaluation of the property over on Songbird Slough? Maybe you made a mistake.
Thank you so much for sharing your thoughts with us today.
Carrie, I'm glad you're leaving.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes... Well, no, we have one online commenter, and that will be read by our favorite Evan.
Good morning, everyone. We have one comment today. Comment is from Kyle Hughes. Subject is support fairness for all DuPage Jail employees. Comment reads, "I am frustrated for the medical staff at DuPage Jail. Unlivable pay, understaffed and overworked, all with contract delays. I insist that you take care of these people who serve your county and put it first. It is your job." That is the end of the comment.
Okay. There you have it. That's the end of our public comment portion. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. I have to... I know, I know, I'm getting it. So there's a motion and a second, but I'm going to read it into the record. Item 7A, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting, Tuesday, April 26, 2022. B, Payment of Claims for 2022 Auto Debit Pay List. C, Payment of Claims for 222022 Pay List. D, Payment of Claims for 262022 Pay List. E, Payment of Claims for 292022 Pay List. F, Payment of Claims 532022 Pay List. And G, Consent Item, Change Orders to Various Contracts As Specified in the Attached Packet. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DiCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. On to the Order of County Board, Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 203-22, a resolution, appointment of Michael Gutman as a member of representing Ducom of ETSB Board for 911.
Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DiCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
And Shorzy. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 204-22, a resolution, the appointment of James Flynn to the York Field Fire Protection District.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Move on CBR 205-22, a resolution, the appointment of Frank Gravina to the Sheriff's Merritt Commission.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ashley Selman. On to the Order of Finance, Member Chaplin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 02622, Resolution Budget Transfers 5102022 from various companies and accounting units.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DiCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Selman. Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you. On to the Order of Ad-Hoc Fine Arts. In Member LaPlante's absence, I know we have Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a very brief update. Member LaPlante's not here today because she had emergency surgery in her family. So we're fingers are crossed for the Alway family. First and foremost, want to make sure everyone has the May 28 date on their calendars. We'll be at the fairgrounds from 10:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale now, so if you haven't got your tickets yet, you can go to dupagecountyfair.org. If you haven't seen your emails from last week already, you're going to start seeing a lot more with the marketing collateral coming. So everyone here, we can share both the information we have, but there's also some really neat social media items coming. And then just as a reminder, it's an event for all ages, all tastes in music and art, bunch of food varieties, so it's a good event for the whole family. So any questions, myself and Member LaPlante happy to help. Thanks.
Looks like a fabulous party. Thank you, Member Selman, for that committee update. And I encourage everyone to attend. It looks like it'll be a lot of fun, and it's the inaugural Fine Arts Festival. And I suspect people will say for years to come, well, you will be able to say, Sheila, you'll be able to say, I was there at the first one, you know, like Woodstock or something like that.
Forty years later, we'll be like Odium.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. We move on to the next order of business, environmental. Member Sheila Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, for comments this morning, well, yeah, still this morning. First of all, on the B portion of the resolution we are putting forth this morning, talking about trash hauling in unincorporated areas. First, I want to thank Lake County and Walter Willis for putting forth this resolution in Lake County. I know it was a big lift, but they got it done. I have watched this for a long time because as an unincorporated resident, I have, and others have more than me, I have four trash days in my neighborhood and six companies that service my street. So that is 12 trash trucks a week. Unfortunately, they almost all come at about 5:30 or 6:00 a.m. So almost every day of the week, I hear that on my street. From an environmental impact, all of that CO2, when two trucks could do the job of 12, I think is bad for our environment. It's bad for the township roads. And while I know that this is more a purview of the townships, they have to do this under referendum. And with the U.N. climate reports coming through, I think that there's more urgency to this situation. And if Lake County can do it, I think we should at least take a look at what DuPage can do to make that better. I think that's all I have to say, so I'll ask for a motion on ENP 0146-22, Recommendation for the Approval of an Agreement Between the County of DuPage, Illinois and Aptim Environmental and Infrastructure LLC for Professional Engineering Services for the DuPage County Solid Waste Management Five-Year Plan, and Update, An Unincorporated Waste Hauling Service Study for the Period of May 11th through November 30th, 2022, for a Total Amount Not to Exceed $90,000. Not other professional services not subject to competitive bidding.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Desart.
Aye.
DiCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Selman. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
And Covert. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Thank you, Member Rutledge. On to the Order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Chairman. We had a good discussion with Director Chadwick and Tim Harbaugh about the Care Center Capital Project. It's underway, so we'll just give you an update on that. And also, as far as the ARPA allocation with the DuPage Foundation Transformational Project, they're looking at awarding their first allocations in June, and that would be for immediate needs. So just to keep you guys updated. And I will move approval of HHS P0161-22, Approval Contract Purchase Order to McKesson Medical Surgical Governmental Solutions. This is for Incontinent Products for the Care Center, June 1st, 2022, through May 31st, 2023, not to exceed $120,000.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Selman. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DiCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. And Pachowski. Thank you. Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of HHS CO-0016-22, Amendment to County Agreement with Loaves and Fishes, CSBG, to extend contract through September 30th, 2022, to provide essential household supplies, personal care items, diapers, wipes, cleaning supplies for COVID pandemic, to increase the contract by $20,000.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan. Oh, forgive me, I'm sorry. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan.
Aye.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DiCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. And Pachowski. Thank you. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHS CO-0017-22, Amendment to County Subgrant Agreement. This is with West Suburban Community Pantry through the CSBG to extend the contract through September 30th, 2022, and increase the contract by $42,000.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
Move approval of authorized overnight travel for the Information and Referral Manager to attend the Illinois DCEO Community Services Block Grant Mandatory Training, May 31st through June 1st, 2022, and results-oriented training, June 1st to June 2nd, 2022, in Springfield, $370.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
And I move approval of another authorization for overnight travel. This is the Information and Referral Administrator to go to the Illinois DCEO CSBG Mandatory Training, May 31st to June 1st, 2022, for $640 in Springfield.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan. That's it. Okay, that was nice. Very concise. Thank you. Now we move on to judicial public safety. Member Renahan.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of JSP 0152-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract LDV Inc. for Purchase of a Mobile Command Post with Sheriff's Office and Merritt to provide such vehicle for safe, effective, and efficient on-scene operational needs for long-term and complex investigations, and incident responses for a contract not to exceed $802,667.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DiCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. And Pachowski. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Thank you, Member Renahan, a fine report. On to the Order of Legislative, Member Dawn Desart for a committee update.
Thank you, Chairman. Some great news in Springfield last week. Illinois received a double upgrade from S&amp;P Global Ratings at our credit. Fiscal responsibility, fiscally responsible choices over the past three years have made real progress toward fiscal stability in Illinois. For the past 20 years, Illinois had seen downgrade after downgrade, and now Illinois has received a remarkable swing with multiple credit upgrades. In Washington, and this next part comes directly from our federal lobbyist, BGR Group, Washington was rocked last week when the draft of the Supreme Court opinion overturning Roe v. Wade was leaked. The unprecedented leak consumed nearly all of the oxygen in the Capitol, they say. Senate Majority Leader Chuck Schumer immediately announced the Senate would be voting on legislation to codify abortion rights before the court can issue a final decision. And the House was in research, recessed last week, but Democratic members also rallied on the issue, and President Biden urged quick congressional action. Also, I want to point out during this segment of our meeting, May is National Military Appreciation Month, so I want to express my gratitude for all those who serve and who have served in our military, including my Marine Corps brother Todd, now retired, Semper Fi, and my Army brother Jay and sister-in-law Carla, both retired as well. Carla, both retired as well. So thank you to all of our veterans and current service members for your service. This is a quote from the USO staff. "Three hundred sixty-five days a year, seven days a week, and twenty-four hours a day, members of the US military are on call around the world defending the interests and security of our nation. This May during Military Appreciation Month is the perfect opportunity to express gratitude to them and to their families for all that they do every single day." That's my report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Fine report. Onto the Order of Public Works. In Member Ozog's absence, we have Member Greg Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I move to amend PWP 158-22, recommendation for the approval of a contract with Revere Electric Supply Company for Rockwell Automation Software Support Skater System to reflect a contract not total not to exceed $58,863.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
And Garcia.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Thank you, Member Hart.
Oh, I think-
Do you have a committee update?
Yeah, I got a couple things-
Oh, one more. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I move on PWP 158-22 as amended.
Overnight travel. Yes. There's been a motion and a second. Hearing no objection. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay, the ayes have it. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Onto item B. I move approval of an authorization for overnight travel to have one public works staff member attend the IAPA IDPH ERTC Cross Connection Control Training in Springfield, Illinois.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Onto the Order of Stormwater. Member Zay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Under committee updates, the Stormwater Management Department created a grant program inviting local municipalities to submit flood control and water quality projects for the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding. The grant will award funding for construction of shovel-ready projects that demonstrate flood protection and resilient measures. The county will provide a 50/50, caution up to $500,000 per awarded project. This program will distribute an estimated $8 million of the $180 million that DuPage County was allotted through ARPA funding. The grant application process was open nearly two months ago and closed on April 21st. During that time, DuPage County received 31 ARPA applications from 18 municipalities with a total request of $9.67 million for the projects totaling $48.5 for DuPage County. Projects were requested in each of the county's major watersheds in each county board district. Staff is currently reviewing and ranking all submissions in addition to ensuring they meet the ARPA guidelines. A similar program with the townships will be started this summer for stormwater drainage in the amount of $1 million. Stormwater committee will provide final review, discussion, and approval, which is currently anticipated at the June meeting, and then will be brought to the county board. So that is our ARPA money working for us. Lots of applications from our municipalities, and I think the big thing is our money started this application project, and that it will lead to hopefully $48.5 million worth of projects for stormwater here in DuPage County. So I want to thank our staff for working hard on this and setting this program up, and looking forward to getting the final approvals to the county board for these projects. With that, I move on SMR 2022, recommendation approval. Been intergovernmental agreement with the County of DuPage and the Village of Carroll Stream for Klein Creek stabilization. Amount not to exceed 125,000. 2022 Water Quality Improvement Grant.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 20122, recommendation intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County and the City of Wooddale for Potter Street Detention Base and retrofit. Amount not to exceed 103,370. 2022 Water Quality Grant Program. Amy just got back.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you. Member Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP 15922, approval of contract purchase order issued to Robinson Engineering for on-call professional engineering services. Amount not to exceed $95,000.
Leave is granted. Members Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP 16022, approval of contract used to Distrain Associates for on-call drainage engineering services. Amount not to exceed $70,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's a fine report. Onto the Order of Technology. Member Ashley Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I move, I think only, I move on TEP 162-22, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to AT&amp;T to provide a distributed tennis system in the 503 building. The contract covers May 15th, 2022, through November 30th, 2022, for a total of $82,000. This is sole source ARPA item.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante, Ozog, Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schwartz.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Salmon. Onto the Order of Transportation, and that means Member Don Pachowski.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve DTR 0200-22, a resolution for a license agreement between the County of DuPage and Forest Preserve District of DuPage County for construction access within Green Valley Forest Reserve. No county cost.
Then a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
DeSart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante and Ozog.
Lieutenant Pachowski. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve amendment to DTR 00028-20, amendment to a resolution through the County of DuPage and L. R. Department of Transportation for improvements at intersection 22 at Naperville Road at Route 38. Correction of progress, section number to 19-00195-05-CH.
Okay. Any change in the lineup here? No? Okay. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve amendment to DTR 01728-22, amendment to a resolution issued to K5 Construction Company for 2022 Pavement Maintenance South Program, Section 22. Correction of funding scribners error.
There's been a motion and a second. Request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTP 0154-22, recommendation approval contract to Nite EA Inc. for professional Phase II design engineering for improvements along Fabian Parkway from Route 38 to the county line for a contract not to exceed $728,948.86.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Thank you. Move to approve DTP 0155-22, recommendation approval contract to Patrick Engineering Inc. to provide professional Phase I and Phase II engineering services improvements on the bridge on Geneva Road over the west branch of the DuPage River for a contract amount of $531,924.03.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Move to approve DTP 0156-22, recommendation approval contract to Standard Equipment Company to furnish and deliver one Enzalite X Sewer Camber for Division of Transportation for a contract not to exceed $148,902.41.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Move to DTP 0153-22, recommendation approval contract to Walt Hamilton Associates for professional traffic engineering assistance and signal control coordination and timing for a contract not to exceed $188,000.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, move to approve DTP 0164-22, recommendation approval contract Atlas Engineering Group Limited for professional structural engineering service under the Department of Transportation for a contract not to exceed $350,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski. Very fine report. That concludes all our committee reports. We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business. We have, let's go, Member Krajewski, followed by, let's go from the back to the front. Member Schwartz, Sheila Rutledge, Garcia, right across the front. I wanted to hear from everybody in the front row last. Thank you. So yeah, let's start with Krajewski. Let's get him out of the way, then we'll move on to the-
Thank you, Chairman. Get me out of the way, please. Yeah, again, I don't want to rehash all this. I'm just still upset about the $4 million, $3 million. And we briefly touched on this at the Finance Committee meeting, but no, we briefly touched on what I'm going to talk about. But again, you know, we had Auditor White up there, and he's had 10 days. He said he's still going to do a bunch of research and come up with an opinion, et cetera, except for he already gave us an opinion. He was not able to articulate anything in his, what he did, except for the fact that he asked somebody who said they just mailed things first class. So, I mean, we've been here for a couple hours, and we've deduced that there's been, they haven't been able to bring forward anybody who said they actually put it in the mail, anybody who said they took it to the post office, anybody that's done anything with it. But yet, he gives us a memo with three opinions. The most likely is it was put in the mail and sent to Illinois, and they lost it. Or, second most likely is it was put in the mail and the post office failed to deliver it. But his least likely scenario is if the ordinance was not sent. He says here, in my opinion, the most likely scenario, that the October 19 certified copy, which of course hasn't been able to be produced, as you, you know, told us just a few minutes ago, the state's attorney, all they could find was the September 21. Based on all that information, again, the most likely scenario is they have not, they never mailed it out. That's the most likely scenario. So I, again, as I called for earlier, we need to have an outside independent auditing firm come in here, like Baker Tilly, and do a full-fledged internal audit using procedures and find out what happened, et cetera. But, I mean, to get this thing the most likely, so he couldn't find the October 19 one. They don't have it. They weren't able to produce anybody that said they actually put it in the mail, took it to the post office, yet the least likely scenario was it was not mailed out. So again, I don't have confidence that we'll get a report that, based on what we have today, because if I would have saw the most likely scenario was, based on the limited information in 10 days, was they didn't put it in the mail, okay, then I would trust it. So again, I would call for somebody from the outside to come in and take over this. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two comments, please. First, with response to, to the tax. You know, it was said that the ordinance was sent. Why wasn't it received? Who knows? I mean, we all know the mail has been very unreliable and has been in disarray for the last couple of years. Why didn't finance catch it earlier? You know, as it was said at finance, there was no benchmark data to really go from. So, you know, this was a huge expensive mistake. What are our options at this point? We can't recoup the money. We need to do whatever we can, make policy, or these departments need to make policy to keep something like this from happening again, have checks and balances and so forth. So, second comment with regards to public comment. Today, we heard a couple of comments regarding the medical staff at the jail, and I want to thank Michelle Fendrick for coming in, bringing your concerns to us, and thank you for your dedicated service. You know, she mentioned that maybe the county board is indifferent, and I know that myself personally, and I know many of the members on this board are not indifferent, and we really are hoping we can get past this and pass. So, thank you.
Okay. Member Rutledge?
Thank you, Chairman. I too want to make comment about the comments that were made about pay at the jail pre-COVID, and it seemed like such a long time ago. Member Salmon, Member Hart, and myself met with the chairman with those same concerns about what we paid our people here and how we need to protect our most valuable asset, which is our employees, and make sure that we're competitive. Fast forward to last fall, we had a comment from Animal Services that they were not able to keep an on-call person because generally the pay was too low. I went to Mr. Kotmeyer and expressed concern about that. He suggested a pay study, and that's what happened. So my question is, most of our employees got a 5% bump. Why are the jail employees different? And the other comment I'll have about that is it does seem that the pay bump got the impasse going forward at the Care Center. So why is the jail different? Those are my questions.
Member Garcia?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. First, I have two things to say, because I'm in the front row, so I get to say two, because I had to wait. First thing is about the chairman's remarks at the beginning about the money that has been not taken in, in the tax money for the cannabis sales. And the one thing that everybody keeps saying is that the auditor made, made a decision, but it says here, these are preliminary observations. It says there right in the memo that these are preliminary observations. So he's going to do a better one. I have no problem with getting another firm in to do, do the audit, since it seems like this is, I don't want to make this a partisan thing. I would like to keep this out of the partisan race completely. So if that's what we need to do to make sure that we get the facts on this, I mean, I think we're just going to have to get better systems in place so that from now until forward, we can continue to have a way to track things from here to now, or here to then. Secondly, about the jail, the woman who came in, Michelle Fendrick, I really do appreciate her coming in and talking about the conditions at the jail. I have the same concerns as Member Rutledge. I really would like to know why they didn't get the pay increase that everyone else did. I'm very concerned that mental health staff is not increasing at the jail. When we see that's what's happening in the jail right now from all the mental health issues, I'm hoping that we can get some kind of answer to that. And I'm kind of hoping that the sheriff can kind of maybe give us a report on exactly how many medical staff they have and what their pay is, and exactly where we are in terms of what, what their jobs are, I guess, and what their hours are. I would like to get a whole thing on what their medical staff is and their mental health staff, so we could have all the facts in front of us, perhaps at the next county board meeting. That's it.
Okay. Member DeSart?
Thank you so much. Earlier during this meeting, the chairman gave a proclamation to the Asian American Pacific calendar Heritage Month, noting the Heritage Month, and he gave it to Bill Liu of the Sheilin Foundation in Naperville. Isn't he just the loveliest man? He's always so bright and sunny. Anyway, I just wanted to let everybody know that there's a brand-new organization called KAWA, and Member Chavez and I attended a reception for KAWA last evening in Naperville. It's the Chinese-American Women of Act for Action, a wonderful new service organization right here in Naperville and right here in our community. So I just wanted to give a shout out to KAWA, and what a wonderful reception I had last night. Thank you so much.
Very nice. Member Chaplin?
As long as you called on me, I didn't have my hand raised. But, you know, I'll go on missed opportunity. Today in finance, we, I brought forward a proposal for using ARPA money for well-water hookups to Lake Michigan. And I wasn't sure how the committee was going to react to it, so we came in with a very conservative number and conservative approach, but I was pleasantly surprised that the committee overwhelmingly supported using ARPA funds to, you know, transfer people to Lake Michigan water. So we're going to, you know, tighten things up, get a little more information to the committee, but I'm really looking forward to having this program in place and bring Lake Michigan water to people that really need it. So.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Going full circle, we have Mr. Grant Eckoff, ladies and gentlemen.
I would just like to respond to those comments. As I expressed earlier, I'm a little concerned that we might be using ARPA funds to benefit 333 people in a county of 923,000 people with $1 million, and with other people stating that that might be the beginning of a countywide fund to assist people with water and sanitary needs in terms of piping and tap-ins and things like that. I have suggested, and I hope staff follows up on it, that we consider using one-time ARPA funds to benefit our sanitary districts. That would benefit many more people than 333 people, and if it is the county's, county board's desire to benefit people with tap-in fees and to get cleaner water and better sanitary districts, that we make that a full-time project ongoing that's more than just one year, because to benefit 333 people, as I said, in a county this large, I don't think it's fair to the rest of the residents, especially the ones who've already paid their fees or are in the process of doing that and aren't going to get that benefit.